Welcome back, everyone. I call out a recess Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on Petition 23P 1606, Amboy Hill Solar One LLC's request for a special use permit to construct and operate a solar energy system here in the county. If somehow you are listening to us but can't remember or don't have the Zoom meeting ID, The password to get in is 209840. And as I said last evening, that ID and password will remain the same throughout. If you're interested in not participating but viewing and listening to us on YouTube, go to your browser, www.youtube.com, in the search bar, type Lee County Hill I L Zoning Board of Appeals. Don't worry about upper or lowercase letters. Click on that, find the session date you want, presumably tonight, May 17th, and you should then be receiving us streaming live. Well, 10-second delay, but almost live. For technical assistance, you can call D Duffy's technical assistance hotline, 815-973-3449. I note the presence of the ZBA Chair, Mr. Forster; its Vice Chair, Mr. Burrow; Mr. Pratt's here; Ms. Huss is here; Ms. Duffy is here; Alternative Energy Coordinator, Ms. Henkel is here; Mr. Boonstra is not, but one of his assistants is here on Zoom. Mr. Friedman's here on behalf of the petitioner. There are two petitioners' reps with him. Jonathan from Lee County IT is present. Long-suffering, wonderful Kelly is present, as I am. the attendance in this room to 13. Interested parties in person are 1, 2, 3, 4. So I should amend that and say the total attendance in the room is 17. I see two parties on Zoom. So, that's all the housekeeping. And when we left off, Mr. Friedman, you wanted to present some more evidence? The ball's in your court.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'd like to call Mr. Hugh back to the stand.
Come on up, Mr. Hugh. Slaven rules, if you've slept, you gotta be put under oath again. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I just want to go through some of the items that you were asked about last night and provide some additional clarification on a lot of those issues. First, with regard to the Colonel Nathan Whitney House, just to clarify the distances, can you tell us what the distance from the house to the closest panel or module will be?
Yeah, so I guess from the south, it is about 430 feet to the first module or panel. And then from the north, it is about 425 feet to the closest panel.
And based on the work that DSD has done, will the SES, the proposed SES here diminish or adversely impact the historic viewshed of the Colonel Nathan Whitney House?
No.
And did DSD commission a study, a Phase 1 archaeological survey, short-form and above-ground cultural resource survey for the Amboy One site?
That is correct.
So, Your Honor, we have this report. I'd like to submit it as an exhibit. I don't remember which number we're on.
You're on. You were on. It only had one, so that would be dose.
Should I distribute these to you?
Please. Well, you can get somebody to hand them out, and that'd be great, or hand them out while you're talking. I don't. Pet number two.
So, you have the report in front of you?
I do. Or, yeah, I have the information.
So, can you? Sorry. Just want to wait.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, this is the, the report is dated May 10, 2023, correct?
Yes.
Can you just explain, just give a little background of what the report is and why it was commissioned?
So, yeah, so we identified one historical structure, the Colonel Nathan Whitney House, which is adjacent to the project area. As such, we commissioned TRC to complete an above-ground cultural resource survey to assess the effects of the project on the structure. And the conclusion of the report, the assessment resulted in a recommendation of no effect from the project. And the finding report was submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office on May 10 for their review.
And what's the anticipated review time for SHPO?
Typically, in my experience, it's about 30 days from the data submission.
And if SHPO responds with required mitigation, will DSD comply with all mitigation required by SHPO?
Yes, we are committed to doing so.
Did the report conclude that TRC's assessment of the effects for this historic property is focused on characteristics of the historic property that qualified it for inclusion in the National Registry of Historic Places?
Yes.
Did the report conclude that the undertaking will not change the character of the house's use or physical features within its setting that contribute to its historical significance?
Yes.
And did the report note that the construction of the solar plant panels will not diminish the integrity of the historic property's significant historic features?
Yes.
And one more point. Given the maximum height of the solar panel arrays will be approximately nine feet, and the vegetative screening to be implemented according to the plans that were included and required under the code, the solar energy facility will not block, will be totally blocked from view from the house?
That is correct.
Regarding the pile driving, do you anticipate or expect the driven piers to create anything more than negligible vibrations?
No.
And how deep will they normally go?
Based on our experience in other projects, they're typically about five to 10 feet, but I think in this area it would be about seven and a half. Ultimately, that is dependent on what the geotechnical survey brings back.
And what is the company's experience and basis for the conclusion that only, the project will only cause negligible vibrations?
Again, this is solely based on our experience in developing projects all over the country. You know, it's been told to me that you could be within six feet away and not feel any sort of vibrations or impact.
Regarding the landscape plans for adjacent neighbors, what is the plan for providing adjacent neighbor landscape plans?
Right, so at the community meeting, this was a topic that was discussed with the folks that did show up to the community meeting. It is my understanding that with, per the Lee County ordinance, that upon, if we do qualify and receive the special use permit, that we will work with the adjacent landowners for a land screening proposal, whether it's in the form of a payment so that they can go about doing their own land screening proposal, or we will work with them to do it as best as we can. So, we'll give them the option.
With regard to glare, you testified last night that the proposed SES will not produce any noticeable glare. Is that correct?
Correct.
Can you explain the basis for that conclusion?
Right, so the technology of the panels will actually contain an anti-reflection technology, and then the fact that the panels will, you know, always or most of the time be kept at a 90-degree angle, you know, to look at the sun at all times, so.
With regard to topsoil, will any topsoil be removed from the site as part of the proposal?
Is, we do not anticipate to remove any topsoil from the site, and if any topsoil is affected, it will just simply be redistributed within the parcel of the project area.
With regard to the terraces, to restate, will the proposed SES remove any of the terraces?
No.
Will there be any major grating as part of the project?
No.
How far from the nearest panel is the Gitlson Farm airstrip?
Could you spell that for me, please? If you know.
I got it. I believe it's G-I-T-T-L-E-S-O-N.
Yeah, to answer the question, we located the Gitlson airstrip about, it's about 1.35 miles from the nearest panel.
You testified last night that the application did not include a noise study. Is that correct?
That's right.
And why did DSD conclude that a noise study for this project would not be necessary?
So, first and foremost, again, it's based on our experience of developing and building and owning solar projects all over the country. And I would add that the equipment pads will actually be at least 500 feet away from the property boundaries, so there'll be space within the solar farm. So, you won't, no adjacent neighbors will be able to hear any, if little, to noise, any noise produced by the equipment.
Okay, with regard to, you were asked about property values and impacts on neighboring property values, and you testified that the application here, again, did not include a specific study on property value impacts. Is that correct?
Correct.
And why did DSD conclude that such a study or analysis was not necessary here?
Again, we didn't think it was necessary to do a study because we did our own research on the impact of solar farms on adjacent properties, and we have a third-party report that we are willing to share.
Your Honor, we'd like to submit this as an exhibit.
Exhibit pet three.
That specifically talks about the impact of, you know, solar farms within the Midwest, including Illinois. And while, and I would emphasize that the study is related more so towards the larger-scale utility-scale projects that you normally see, I would like to emphasize that this project is a lot smaller than the typical large solar farms you see, and, you know, are 30 acres. So, I think that our conclusion is that they would have no impact to adjacent properties.
And who was this report prepared by?
It was prepared by SEIA, which is S-E-I-A, known as the Solar Energy Industry Association.
And it's two pages, front and back?
That's right.
And is it correct that the study, that SEIA is reported here, conducted a study across Illinois and determined that the value of property, the value of properties within one mile increased by an average of 2% after the installation of a solar farm?
Yes.
You were asked last night about the size of the panels, correct?
Yes.
Can you give us some additional detail on the size?
Sure. Let's get my notes out here. So, again, as mentioned last night, technology is evolving constantly on the photovoltaic panels. However, if we were to make a decision and select equipment today, they would be approximately 95 inches in length, 45 inches in width, and about 1.38 inches in height.
Thank you. Are Maguire and Whitney Roads township roads?
My understanding is that they are both township roads.
With regard to the access road to the property, to the SES, can you give us the general location of where the access road will be?
Sure. So, it would be a new driveway road off of McGur Road. And we typically follow the National Fire Code, which is, in terms of for width, it's about 12 feet. However, whatever, if the local fire department mandates something else, we will comply with that regulation.
With regard to cameras, can you clarify where cameras will be positioned and what their purpose will be for the proposal?
Yeah, so to clarify on the cameras from last night, the cameras will be solely located within the equipment pads. It won't be near any roads or any neighbors or property boundaries. And so, the camera's purpose really is to just monitor the equipment so that, and to make sure that it's working.
Will there be, will there be any lighting as part of the project?
Lighting is not anticipated.
Question was raised last night about the vegetative buffer and the location of the vegetative buffer. So, I just want to clarify that the veget, is this correct, that the vegetative buffer will be located on the perimeter of the leased premises?
That is correct.
And so, between an adjacent property and the equipment, there will be the vegetative buffer that you will provide, DSD will provide as part of the leased premises, plus whatever additional agricultural screening exists?
Correct.
No further questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sessor, if you can hear me, do you have any questions, this witness? Okay. Ms. Henkel.
Would you be able to go over that vegetative screening again? I'm not sure I was following.
The one that Mr. Friedman was just talking about?
Correct.
Yeah, so, well, I think it was the question related to last night, I guess with regards to the leased area. The vegetative screening that we are proposing will be part of the leased area. In other words, the panels, the equipment surrounded by the vegetative screen will, combined, will be the leased area of the, for the project area.
Okay, so to confirm, the buffer will no longer be located at the property line, but at the fence?
The fence line.
Okay.
Yeah, so the 30 acres that were, that has been proposed will be, will be inclusive of that.
Okay. Nothing further?
Ms. Duffy?
Nothing.
Mr. Forster?
No questions.
Mr. Burrow?
Sir, have you contacted either the Lee County Highway or the Township Road Commissioner to check on any of the possibilities for a gate entrance yet?
I do not believe so, but we did contact the department to start the road use agreement process, but was told to hold off until we go for building electrical permits.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Mr. Pratt.
So, you stated some distances to the Whitney House when you started. One was 423 feet to the east, the other was 400 foot to the north. Are them to the property line or to the foundation of the house?
I believe it's to the foundation of the house. Yeah, so it's, to reclarify, it's 430 feet from the south to the first module, and then it's 425 feet to the north, in the north.
So, it's considerably closer to the property line, correct?
Yes.
Okay, back to the buffers. So, you stated now the buffers are going to be inside the leasehold area, correct?
It is part of the leasehold area.
So, are you going to create a buffer of the entirety of the boundary area?
My understanding is that it's gonna, there will be vegetative buffers in specific areas.
Based on what?
Based on the site layout.
I just didn't hear that. I'm not sure anybody, based on?
Based, oh, on our proposed site layout, the way we designed it.
But according to ordinance, you're supposed to screen non-participating properties. How do you determine the distance? You know, you're a long ways from a non-participating property if you put it in the leasehold area. How are you going to determine how far you allow that vegetative buffer to go?
We'll comply with whatever the county's ordinance and whatever the zoning board mandates.
So, then, how will a property owner decide whether he wants to opt out of that?
We will work with the landowners on what he or she would like to do.
So, you're saying if the owner, as example, if the owner of the Whitney House says, "I no longer want a buffer 400 foot away from my house," you will make a payment to him?
Yeah, whatever the Lee County ordinance is, we will follow that.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Ms. Huss.
Did you review the Lee County Comprehensive Plan, a plan that serves as a blueprint for growth development within the county, designed to aid development officials, developers, landowners, and the public in the decisions regarding growth in the county?
Yes.
How do you feel that this project proposed meets or helps the county achieve the goals within?
We believe that this is consistent with the alternative renewable energy, and that this is not, and this is not wind.
Nothing further.
One quick question, which you said tonight. I think it's implied, but you said the cameras will be mounted on the pads to monitor the equipment. I assume you meant that, so you said transformers would be on the pads, correct?
That's right.
I assume, then, that the cameras will be aimed at the transformers. Is that correct?
Yes.
Will they rotate?
I don't have the answer to that question at this time, but, sorry, the answer to that question.
And just a very few from the other night. If you know, is the Village of Franklin Grove within one and a half miles of the proposed project site boundary?
Yes.
Turning your attention to, if you don't mind grabbing your material, your, what's called the special use permit application. You got it?
I don't have.
You got one?
I'm sorry.
Thanks. About halfway through tab A, which probably got six pages, there's a page that, at the top, says Notice of Public Hearing, Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, and it says, "To Whom It May Concern." The first, part of the first sentence says, "On February 27, 2023." Do you see that page?
Yes.
All right, turn one, two, three pages behind that, and again, I think it's one of those things that's implied, but the application doesn't say, and you never said. There is two pages of that following, which are, appear to be receipts from the USPS, United States Postal Service, showing copies of receipts for certified mail. Did those copies of receipts relate to the mailing of the Notice of Public Hearing that I just read two pages before? Okay. Interested parties, by raise of the hand. You add your hand up first, green sweater?
You told us where, how close the solar panels are going to be to the house, to the north and the south, but you've never told us the east.
That's a statement.
Oh.
You gotta ask a question.
Could you tell us the east, please?
I will have to get back to you on that.
Anybody else? Interested parties. Mr. Wagner? I gotta do it by whose hand I see first. I don't know another way to do it.
Mr. Yu, once again, this is property lines. You gave setbacks to the foundation of the house. Is that correct? In your, in the initial statements here, the 300 or 400 feet, that was measured from the foundation of the house?
Yes.
So, what is the setback from the property line?
Again, we'll comply with whatever setback requirements are mandated by the Lee County ordinance.
Okay. You used your setbacks along with your testimony about someone who you hired, an expert, to say that from those two directions, there would be no visual disturbance of the historical integrity of that property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are you aware of the fact that from those two directions, there is absolutely no public view of the property?
Sorry, could you restate the question?
Are you aware of the fact that from those two directions from which you gave us measurements and your expert testified or submitted testimony that there would be no visual disturbance to the property, something to that effect? Are you aware of the fact that there is no public view of the Whitney Mansion from those two directions?
From the north and the south, is what you're saying?
From the north and from the east?
Yes.
So, it's a moot point. I'm sorry, that's probably a statement.
Yep.
Are you aware of the fact that the public views of the property are from the south and the west?
Yes.
Did your expert give you an opinion on a disturbance to a view of the property from the south and the west?
I defer to the study. I defer to the study. That was just some evidence.
Okay, that's all I have.
The other interested party. Yes, sir. Let us get you a mic.
You know, from the foundation of the house, I would not expect, I'd expect it from the property lines. And a person came out and took pictures Monday together, and we were talking.
You're telling them things, sir. George, you're telling them things. I can't emphasize enough, now's the time for questions. You're not under oath.
Okay.
If you got a question for, please do.
Okay. You know, in this ordinance, 112208, it mentions a minimum of 500 feet from the dwelling for any inverters, transformers, and storage equipment. And that's a question that I have from Google, a three-page printout here of how dangerous solar panels are and how they...
You're telling them things again. Just try and ask them a question.
Pardon me?
You're telling him things again. Try and ask a question. Try, get to a question.
Okay. My point, I'd like to just submit this, that...
It's not time for that. If you got a question, now's the time to ask him a question.
Okay. Anyway, I'm concerned about the inverters and...
You're telling him what you're concerned about. I'm going to have to cut you off, George, unless you got a question. You'll have your chance to testify if you want, but this is, he's the one under oath on the witness stand.
Okay. So in this ordinance, a minimum of 500 feet from any dwelling for any inverters, transformers, and storage equipment. On page 19 of this...
Oh, get that mic up. No, it's getting farther away.
Page 19 of this has protection of historical resources and sites.
Mike, Mike, Mike?
I don't use this every day.
I understand.
Thank God. You know, in protection of historical resources and sites, I would like to see 1,000 feet.
What you would like to see is something for...
Doesn't mean anything.
Now, you either got a question or not.
I need more feet from...
Okay, you're done. Thank you.
From the...
You're telling them things. I'm sort of politely trying to cut you off, George. Not now.
Okay.
Or, any follow-up questions, Mr. Friedman?
When I had a guest out...
Nope, 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 nope. I'm sorry, but...
You're...
George! I'll give you, okay, I'll give you one more chance. If you got a question, ask a question.
The map that you have shows that you're at the back of our property, which is next to the property as far as... No, I don't, I don't talk that way, so I guess that's difficult.
So in a few minutes, you'll be given an opportunity to present your stuff. But right now, we're asking questions of...
Okay. Sorry.
Thanks, Alice. Okay, follow up. Sure.
I turned your mic off. Can you clarify where the buffer is around the house?
The buffer is on the property line.
And where's that shown? Exactly where the buffer is going to be?
On the property line.
No, no, I mean, what are you looking at?
Oh, it's on the exhibit, the site layout.
The exhibit to what? That picture is attached to the Historic Preservation Report?
Yes.
So just to clarify, it is on the property line, on the north, east, and south parts of the property line? Is that correct?
Yes.
No further questions?
Okay, you may step down. Thank you.
We don't get to re-ask questions on that.
Okay, go ahead.
That's right.
Okay, now I'm even more confused. Property line is different from leasehold parcel line. You stated earlier that it was going to be on the leasehold property. Now you're telling me it's on the property line. Which one is correct?
I was confused by the initial question, so it's on the property line.
It's now on the property line?
I would defer to the evidence that we submitted.
So do you have a lease on the property that the buffer will be built on?
This part, I think it's part of...
Can I, can I talk, I just want to, real quick?
If you don't mind, Mr. Pratt, re-ask your question.
Yes, can you just clarify again, two things?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said, Mr. Pratt, why don't you re-ask the question?
So to your latest testimony, you said that the buffer would be built on the property line, not on the leasehold line. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that where it's going to be built?
Yes.
So do you have that property leased?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Is there a map that delineates the leasehold area from the parcel area?
I believe that's one of the exhibits in the study. If not, we can provide one, if it's not.
Section B, there's a map that shows the buffers.
While they're talking, Mr. Forrester, any questions?
But it doesn't delineate which parts of the project parcel leasehold area.
Off the record, Kimmy. Mr. Forrester, any questions?
No.
Mr. Burrow?
No.
Back to you, Ms. Huss. I'm just trying to... Any other questions? Ms. Huss, floor is yours.
No.
Ms. Henkel? Ms. Duffy? Fairness, we go around again. Just, we're now limited to this inquiry about property lines and buffers. Interested parties? People on Zoom? Click the participant icon, then click the raise hand button. Okay, you may step down. Thank you. Mr. Friedman, any further evidence?
I'd like to recall your witness, Mr. Yuknis. Very quickly.
Sondra Swer, testimony or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And state your name again?
Nicholas Yuknis.
And you're an environmental scientist with DSD, is that correct?
With TRC Environmental.
Oh, with TRC, thank you. What is a wetland and stream delineation survey?
It is a, excuse me, it's a formal survey to determine the boundaries of wetlands and waterways.
Thank you. Did you personally do that survey?
I did not personally do that survey.
But TRC did?
Correct.
Yesterday, last evening, you testified about your inquiry to the Hargis, the ISHPO Hargis inquiry, I'm going to call it. Was that your first inquiry to the Illinois State Historic Preservation Office about the historic property?
Yes, the, so my, the archaeologist on staff, who completed the archaeological portion of the work, she did that as the initial and first step of the review.
And that's what identified the Colonel Whitney home?
Correct, I believe so.
And from there, TRC went and did their own analysis, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Questions, this witness, Mr. Freeman? Ms. Henkel? Ms. Duffy? Mr. Forrester? Mr. Burrow?
No.
Mr. Pratt?
No.
Ms. Huss?
No.
Interested parties in the room? People on Zoom? Click the raise hand thing. Okay, you may step down. Thanks. I'm going to call one more witness for clarification, Ms. Duffy. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do.
Ms. Duffy, would you agree yesterday you testified about your sending a notice of public hearing to county board members, the Lee County Health Department, the Lee County Engineer, and highway supervisor, Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District Office, the Franklin Grove Township Supervisor, the Franklin Grove Township Highway Commissioner, and the Franklin Grove Village... You say mayor, I think that's probably a president if it's a village. Do you remember saying that?
Yes, that I presented as Exhibit 4.
From those, from those mailings, did you get any responses from any of those people?
I have not received any responses from these peoples or agencies, except for the Health Department, which was Exhibit Number 7.
Okay, questions? God, Sinkel? Mr. Forrester?
No.
Mr. Burrow? Mr. Pratt?
No.
Ms. Huss, interested parties? People on Zoom? Thank you, you may step down. All right, now, any, you've closed your evidence, correct, Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Duffy, did you want to call any witnesses other than the testimony you gave last evening and tonight?
No, thank you.
Interested parties in the courtroom will do first, want to testify? Okay.
Do I have any protection from my east property line?
Whoa, 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 just slow down. Slow down, George. Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first thing we're going to do is put you under oath. Now you're going to be under oath, so you raise your right hand for me. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do, Judge.
Okay, we'll start with your name.
George Brewst.
I'll help you get started here. And George, where do you live?
I live in the Colonel Whitney House on Whitney Road.
Is there something special about the Colonel Whitney House on Whitney Road?
It's in the National Historic Registry.
How long have you lived there?
I've lived there about 20 years.
Okay. With whom do you live there, if anyone?
With my, with my wife.
Are you now familiar with the fact that, obviously, that Amboy Il Solar One LLC is proposing, is asking for a special use to develop property, I'm going to call it, behind that house? You're familiar with that, correct?
Yes.
Now, the next part, I want you to try and listen to me very carefully. You can, you can testify now, and you can tell us about facts. When you want to tell the board what you think they ought to do, and what your concerns are, and what you hope for, and what you don't hope for, that will come at the end, right? Now we're going to stick to facts. And facts that you say you can be cross-examined by any of the folks, as I've, if you've seen me go around the horn. Okay, so let's stick to facts, try your best. A fact is whether the red, whether the light was red or green. The fact is not you're concerned about how the thing's going to look to your house. So go ahead, let's give it a try.
Well, there's discussion about protection. I like to know what protection I have from the east.
That's a question. Now you asked a question.
I should have saved that.
You're testifying.
I should have saved that.
Yeah.
I, 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 I need protection around the house.
That's a, we understand that, and you can tell them that.
Solidarity. My neighbors have been corn, you know, corn. And all of a sudden, this comes along. And I looked at the map, and I, your farm, your solar farm goes right up to my east wall, or my east property line. Again, I go back to this statement back in this ordinance, 112208, protection of historical resources and sites. What, what protection can I have from that east wall?
That's a question, George. If you got facts, let's talk about facts. Otherwise, you can stand up and you can, you can tell these folks how you feel and what you're worried about in about 10, 15 minutes.
Okay, the first time I saw the home was in April 1995. And the State of Illinois has a historical society. They picked the Whitney Home for their April month, and it's the first time I saw it.
That'd be a great closing argument. That would be just dandy.
And I proceeded to buy it maybe five years later, so. What protection, can I say it this way? What protection do I have from my east property line? The map shows everything running right up to the east property line. The fact is, I don't see any provision. Yes. Okay, I do have a report here, which I started to do. I'd like to put in as something for a fact. And this report says the, the health risk of solar panels. And it goes on to explain, little do people know that solar energy systems can be dangerous to their health due to the EMFs emitted. It also leads to radiation and cancer. It also leads to radiation and, and cancer fears. From Google.
That'd be great, why don't you call it IP1? Any other facts, George?
I have a map here that shows the proposed solar array fence that goes around my east boundary and then curls around my, my south boundary. I'm sorry, north boundary. So it curl, it's around, it's around the east boundary and it's curls around, and it doesn't, doesn't give me any idea what kind of protection I have there.
Is that map something you want people to look at?
It's, it's one of their maps.
Is that map something you want the ZBA to look at?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's mark that as IP number two, make copies of that.
And I guess that is it, other than another fact is
All right.
I, I don't want to be forced out of this house, and I need some protection on these boundary lines. Otherwise, I'm forced out of this house.
That's a good speech to give at the end.
Okay, I'll save it again. That's all I got, I guess.
Okay, how about interested parties? Anybody want to testify? Oops, I shouldn't. I'm sorry, do you have any questions of this witness? Mr. Forrester, questions of? Mr. Burrow?
Is the IP number one going to be that?
It's Google article, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Mr. Pratt?
No questions.
Ms. Huss? Any other interested parties have questions of this interested party? How about folks on Zoom? Okay. Got to wait a minute for Ms. Henkel and Ms. Duffy, Mrs. Henkel and Duffy to come back. Ms. Henkel, do you have any questions of? Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Duffy, do you have any questions of George?
No.
Okay. I think we're finished with the production of evidence, and I think now then is a good time for us to take a break, everybody gather themselves, we'll take. I said Zoom. No, no. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I asked that, if I didn't, I lost my place. Further interested parties to testify? Sorry, I thought I asked that, I don't know why I did. Want to raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, all the truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And help us start with your name and where you live in relation to the, well, state your name.
Mark Wagner.
Mr. Wagner, do you live, work, or own a business in Lee County?
Yes.
All right. Go ahead, you take it from there.
Okay, I'd like to present some factual photographic evidence with a little bit of a narration, if I may. And that, okay, it's been submitted electronically. Is that number one then? Okay, I think I have nine photos I would like to share and give a little narration now. I took these this morning, 10:00 AM. They're taken with a wide-angle lens, and that was the only way I could, I could possibly show this property, because it's very big, and I just want you to know that the wide-angle lens distorts reality, it makes things look really bigger than what they are, like, just more stretched out. Anyway, this is photograph number one, so what we're looking at here is we're looking, we're looking, we're on, I'm on McGur Road, I'm looking to the north, and what you see there is, is the rear portion or the eastern half of the subject property, or whatever we're going to call it. So we're looking across ju, just about the back half of this property. The Whitney Mansion is visible, I don't have a pointer, but it's, it's to the, it looks like a little dot in the back there next to a bunch of trees, that's, that's where the mansion is, if you were actually standing there, it looks much closer. But we can see that behind the house here, the, the land is on a slope. It's, it's on a downward slope, it appears to me that the house was built on the crest of a hill, and so it's sloping down in the back. Now, this probably is where they're going to put in the access road, it sounds like to me, right, right off of, right off of McGur. So, there's quite a bit of, of land there. Can we go to number two? Okay, this is also taken from McGur. To, to the left, that's McGur Road. So now we are looking towards the west, from that same place I was really standing before. This is showing the southern half of the subject property, and you can see, you can see the Whitney Mansion, you know, where the big tree is a little bit to the right there, it looks like a little dot, that's where the Whitney Mansion is. Just about everything that we see here will have solar panels on it, less the setbacks, but anyway. We can go now to number three. Now we are on McGur Road once again, this time looking north. So we're looking at the southwest half of the subject property, you can see the Whitney Mansion a little better there. This portion has a lot of little rolling hills, it's almost like a kiddie roller coaster. I'm not quite sure how you place solar panels on there without disturbing the soil, but this is not even, and as a matter of fact, the portion to the right of it also, you, you can see, it's being exaggerated here, it looks, it looks less hilly than what it actually is. Anyway, from, from this point of view, a tourist, a spectator, whoever wants to come and see, see the Whitney Mansion, they would be seeing it, they could see it from this view, and it looks a lot closer than what it looks like with the wide-angle lens. Can we go to number four? All right, this is taken from the corner of Whitney and McGur Road. So, the big road we're looking at there is Whitney Road that curves down into Franklin Grove. You can see, once again, the mansion there, and this is a lot of what we're seeing would be covered with solar panels, according to the diagram that was shown to us yesterday. Once again, this is a, a view for, from the public coming to see the mansion, seeing it from this angle. Can we go to number five? This, this angle is taken from Whitney Road looking towards the east. So this is showing the southwestern portion of, of the property. You can, the Whitney Mansion itself is behind the big tree, I think there was a little addition put on the back or something like that, because you can, you can kind, kind of see that. Anyway, once again, we're looking at, well, let's just go to number six. Number six is just about in front of the, on, from Whitney Road, looking, looking down the road that leads to, to the Whitney Mansion, so the man, the mansion is right there, and you can see that, that the terrain here, it, it's going uphill, and then it drops down in, in the back. So, this would be the, the northwestern portion of the, the property. I, I'm not sure exactly where the owner's property line is here, I, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm assuming that the cut grass i, is his property and that there would be possibly no turbines right there, but I'm not sure about that. Can we go to number eight? Okay, this is taken once again from Whitney Road looking, looking towards northeast, you can see the mansion back there, and, and on the adjacent property. He's got some, some trees in the front there, but this is another view that the public would have. And if we go to number nine? Is that nine? Okay. This is taken from Whitney Road looking slightly to, to the southeast. I'm not sure if that's, are you sure that's number nine? There it is.
You skipped seven.
Oh, I skipped seven? Can you go back to seven? All right, I thought we were off. Is that seven? Okay, seven is the, taken from Whitney Road looking slightly southeast, showing, he's got an orchard to the right there. Once again, this is a public view, if you can go to eight, just to confirm, eight is taken from Whitney Road looking toward the northeast, showing Whitney and the adjacent property, and if you can go to the last one, number nine, there's a, a view of the mansion, it's not straight on, it's on a straight, it's on a slight angle. He's got some kind of a storage thing on the left-hand side, but that is what the mansion looks like, and that's what people would see from the front. I want to point out that these photos, they have not been retouched in any manner. They were taken this morning with a Nikon S6-800 camera, wide-angle lens, 4.5 millimeter. And that concludes my testimony.
Right. Mr. Friedman, questions of this witness?
None, no questions, thank you.
Ms. Henkel?
None, thank you.
Ms. Duffy?
So, Mark, I see there's a lot of overgrown bushes around the entire property, and some very old large trees, is that correct?
Correct, and on the left there, that's a metal.
That, he's, she's George, you're not under oath! I, no!
Nope, I'm just asking, Mark.
Talking to me.
Is that what you're showing?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm trying to show the house, but, yeah, there, there are some trees there that he has planted, I, as the year goes around, he has flowers and things change, so I'm, you might have to ask him exactly what he has growing there, but.
All right, no more, no more questions.
All right, uh, Mr. Forrester?
No questions.
Mr. Burrow?
Mr. Wagner, when your, one photo at the junction of McGur and Whitney Roads, was that showing where solar panels would be at that intersection?
Can, can we go back to that?
Do you know what slide that was, or photo it was, Mr. Burrow?
Maybe two or
Two.
Three? The, the one with the zoning sign on, I think. There.
That one. As far as I could tell, from their diagram yesterday, there would, there would be solar panels in, in this view, because it, it looked like it, it's not just behind the house, but it's wrapping around the house to a certain extent on both sides. So there would be, there would be solar panels in view there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
That's all.
Ms. Huss? Let's see, other interested parties, other than Mr. Wagner, questions of Mr. Wagner? How about on Zoom? All right, thank you, let me step down. Or step away, I guess. Any other interested parties, I don't want to skip anybody like I almost did. Any other interested parties want to testify? How about on Zoom? All right, I'll go back where I came from about 10 minutes ago. That will conclude the evidence, let's take a break, everybody can gather themselves, and we'll take public comments, closing arguments, whatever you, term you prefer. How about, eh, quarter after? We've reached the stage of closing arguments, public comments. This is the opportunity for folks not under oath to tell the ZBA how they feel, what they think, what they urge the ZBA to do or not do. The only sub-rule is it has to be, those arguments have to be based on the evidence presented, or in the old lawyer phrase, reasonable inferences therefrom. As petitioner, Mr. Friedman, you have the opportunity to go first.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank the ZBA members and Your Honor and court reporter and staff and the interested parties for being here, being interested and listening to us and asking good questions. To reemphasize a couple of things. One, again, the petitioner will comply with each and every requirement that is necessary and applicable to the project, both under the county's solar ordinance, as well as the county's zoning code, as well as the county building code, as well as the state historic preservation regulations, the city's, the county's comprehensive plan, et cetera. Every single applicable law, we will comply with. A couple of individual comments. First of all, in the study, again to emphasize, in the study, the historic study that we provided, as part of, this is exhibit two, exhibit two to the report, that's in the record, states that picturesque views and scenic vistas from and around the house are not national historic registered property qualifying characteristics of this property. And in fact, in the report, it also notes that the protected area of the property is 10 feet from its foundation in all directions. And we are certainly, our project is certainly far, far away from that 10-foot protected With regard to the comprehensive plan, just want to emphasize, I know we said that we thought we were consistent with the comprehensive plan, and I think we are. There is an agricultural recommendation on page 21 of the comprehensive plan that provides a policy for preservation of the agricultural economy and farm operations as a way of life and one of the most important goals of the residents of Lee County. The way our project is structured, it allows, as I think was testified, for both the solar panels and ongoing agricultural use of the property. In addition, under the alternative energy recommendation on page 18 of the comprehensive plan, it specifically states that the county encourages the use of other green energies, including solar. And that statement's significant because it was stated in the context of the wind farms that had previously been approved and the need for the county to consider some of the perhaps negative impacts of those wind farms, none of which the solar farm would have. On the property line issue, I just want to emphasize again, try to clarify, that the landscape buffer around, to the north, to the east, and to the south of the historic home on the property line will be provided under the lease by the applicant. The setback from that, from the foundation of that house, which is the measuring point under the code, we satisfy that setback requirement to the equipment of the proposed SES. And the panels of the SES will all be fenced, as also required with the fence that we described. And I think that concludes my remarks. Thank you again for your consideration.
Interested parties? George, you want to go first or you want to go last?
First, please.
Okay.
Let me hold it, that's okay.
Now's the time.
Okay. I'm looking at a map that's been put out by you, and it shows the proposed solar array fence. And again, to the east, you're right up on my property line. And then you curl it around to the north, around the house, or around the property. And that area you curled puts it very close to my house. I hope I don't get cancer, I hope I don't get health problems or anything else, but it sure would be nice to see that taken off that curls around to the north of my house. And then give me also some kind of buffer to the east. That's all I got.
All right. Other interested parties, speeches? Yes, green sweater came first, Janice. Guess it's because you're sitting in the first seat.
I represent the Lee County Historical Society. One of the first settlers in the area of Franklin Grove was Colonel Nathan Whitney. He came in 1836 and claimed a piece of the prairie south of the grove. He settled there even before the town of Franklin Grove was platted. When he had moved from the eastern part of this country, he brought a large amount of apple seeds and they were planted, and that was the beginning of this huge apple forest. He, along with his son, A.R. Whitney, grafted many trees, and doing this, they spawned a new species of apple tree. It was a crab apple tree that could be grown easily in very cold, hot, and dry conditions. This tree, along with many trees, grew popularity all over the world, and this was in the early 1800s. You can still put a search in on the computer of any major nursery outlet and purchase a Whitney crab apple tree. It was called the Siberian Crab, number 20, sorry. And in the catalog, it gives the history, and this is on the internet, of how it was formed, and it talks about Franklin Grove. It is the only fruit species developed in Lee County. Mr. Prouse has put in a lot of work on his house, both inside and out, and is working diligently on beautifying the landscape. As a historical society, we are concerned that if the solar farm deters people from living in the home, it will stand empty and the history of the mansion will be lost. We are hoping that the zoning committee will put this into consideration when it decides if it will change the zoning for this land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I don't have a prepared statement, but I do have some things to say. Paragraph O, lease scores, I didn't really hear much discussion about this, but that's where it says protection of historical resources and sites, that's in there. And in Lee County, we only have one national registered property in rural Lee County, just one, and that is the Whitney Mansion. The Whitney Mansion has achieved the highest level, the national level of protection. Now, the process that was taken to notify people did really not take into contacting historical agencies. I'm just a local historian, and I only found out about it accidentally driving down the road and seeing the sign, and it's like, oh my God, the Whitney Mansion is going to have solar. We never, ever thought that this could possibly happen. That is the crown jewel of the county. I know that the petitioners, they're going to say that they love solar energy, they want it, it's going to save us, all that kind of stuff. But if, when they came and looked at that particular parcel and saw that there was a historical mansion there, at that time, I guess they didn't even know. I find it appalling that they thought we're going to surround this with glass panels, that a historic property is looked at into the context of not just the building, but what is around the building. The Whitney property encompassed a lot of land outside of that area, and there were all sorts of orchards there. They had a mail order business in the late 1800s. It got reduced over time to the property that this gentleman owns, and I don't really think that people understood that the property around his house, which we all thought was part of what was left of the Whitney Mansion property, was not actually owned by the gentleman who owns the house. But when a historical property is identified, they take into account the aesthetics, they take into account the context of the view of the whole area. Now, if there's a protection of historical resources and sites, this is, if we had been able to contact, I can think of at least a half dozen historical agencies, they would have come here to this. But there was no way to let them know. I know that the Franklin Grove Village Board was notified, and that's great, and the township was notified, but there was no path for the historical crowd to find out about it. I contacted this woman here just a couple of days ago. I mean, we just scrambled, and you can see there's nobody else here. And it's going to take another, I think these guys said, two or three weeks until the state comes up. But there's more people who have a say on this than just that particular organization. Anyway, I think there's a problem here because you allow on the ordinance, there's going to be fencing, okay? But then you allow, I think, what is being called screening. Well, why are you allowing screening? You're allowing screening to hide visually the fence and the solar panels. So everybody's agreeing that, oh, it would be really bad to have to look at these things, so we're going to hide them. That's aesthetics. The aesthetics. What is aesthetics? What is pleasing to the senses and especially the sight? You cannot tell me that putting glass panels mounted on poles almost all around this property keeps it in the historical context of what the Whitney Mansion is supposed to be. It doesn't. There's no way you can convince anybody that it does. And for the zoning board, I know you have the authority to do whatever it is that you want to do. And when you take into account the historical value of that property and all, I'm not talking about the financial value, but the fact that we get a lot of tourism, people come down there because there's a national registered property, they come down to see that. And we don't really know what any of this is going to look like until they actually do it. But I think there's a really good chance here that it's going to look a lot different. And it's not going to be a good look. And quite frankly, it's going to be embarrassing. The petitioners, if this project is not approved, it doesn't hurt them. They have a lot of space where they can go ahead and put in solar installations. They may be planning on other ones right now, whatever. How it is that they picked this historical site and said that they're going to change the context of it forever, for 25 or 35 years, I just think it's wrong. And I hope that the zoning board will take into account the protection, because it's not being protected. the protection, because it's not being protected. Your setbacks and your screens and your fence, maybe you're, a lot of what's in here is to protect the property from damage, or to protect adjacent landowners from damage. Well, how about the historical integrity of the property? It's the only one we have in Lee County. There's a lot of space in the county. So I hope that you will take into consideration that this is really not a good place to put a solar project. Nothing against solar, but they couldn't have picked a worse place in the county. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other interested parties in the courtroom? All right. How about on Zoom? Anybody want to make any public comments? Hit the participant icon, then click the button that says raise hand, and we'll know you want to say something. Okay. Very good. Before, Kelly has to remind me for the third time, I admit, for the zoning board's consideration, zoning officer exhibits one through eight, interested parties exhibits one and two, and petitioners exhibits one, two, and three. And that concludes this stage of the hearing. We will reconvene. I will recess until Monday night. Must be the 22nd. So I got that right? I'm looking at you, D., is, okay. Monday night, 7 o'clock, here, same place, same time. Everybody have a good weekend.